Good evening, everybody. Welcome you to the Aston Township Board of Commissioners Legislative Meeting for Wednesday, April 20th, 2022. And would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all.
For everybody, Commissioner Stigall is out of town on vacation, so he's not here tonight. And I want to let everyone know that, for the record, that the Board held an executive session on April 13th to discuss personnel matters and active legislation. Item number three, review and approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 16th, 2022. Can I have a motion?
Say a motion.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Are there any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it. We now have a very nice proclamation that John Doherty is going to read for Sergeant Chad Osborne. So, John?
Okay. All right, Tatcha of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, proclamation, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Aston Township desires to recognize and honor Sergeant Chad Osborne of the Aston Township Police Department on the occasion of 25 years of faithful and dedicated service to Aston Township and the residents of Aston Township. And whereas Chad Osborne was born and raised in Aston Township and is a graduate of Sun Valley High School, Chad knew from a very early age that he wanted to be a police officer as he had the desire to help others and serve as a role model for his chosen profession. And whereas Chad was hired as a part-time police officer for the Trainer Police Department from 1994 to 1997, and also Brookhaven Borough Police Department from 1995 to 1997, prior to being hired as a full-time police officer with the Aston Police Department. And whereas Chad was hired as a full-time police officer for Aston Township on April 9th, 1997. Chad served as a patrol officer until August of 2005, when he was then promoted to the sergeant, rank of sergeant. Over the past 25 years, Chad has received many commendations and accolades for his exemplary police work. Chad has served as a leader, mentor, and role model for many young officers, providing them with guidance which is necessary to be a community role model. Chad's ethical and moral principles, along with his 25 years of exemplary job performance, has earned him the respect and praise from his fellow officers within the Aston Police Department and his law enforcement colleagues across Delaware County. Chad has served in many roles over the past 25 years, which would include member of the Central Delaware County Tactical Response Team, firearms instructor, field training officer, crash reconstruction officer, and Aston Police Department Scheduling Officer. No matter the role, Chad has embodied the spirit of being a team player as he knows the importance it has in the structure and development of the police department. And whereas Chad currently resides in Aston with his lovely wife Nicole, and has proven himself to be a valuable asset to the Aston Police Department, as well as the Aston Township community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Aston Township Board of Commissioners is proud to join with all of Aston Township residents to congratulate Sergeant Chad Osborne on his 25 years of dedicated service duly proclaimed this 20th day of April, 2022, signed by the Aston Township Board of Commissioners and tested to by Kellyanne Pippen. Chad, want to come up front?
Do you want Joe? Do you want to get a picture? Chad's family is here. I see his parents and his wife. Why don't you guys come out and get a picture?
Congratulations, Sergeant Osborne. We're glad you're here. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to committee reports. Commissioner Doherty?
All right, I have before me the Treasurers Report for March 2022. Total cash in the general fund as of March 31st was $6,255,199.13. Other funds include the TD Bank Bond Fund Checking Account with a balance of $275,750. The TD Bank Escrow Checking Account with a balance of $373,150. The TD Bank ARF Fund Account with a balance of $754,523. The TD Bank Capital Checking Account with a balance of $732,176. Total cash balance for the township as of March 31st, 2022 was $12,628,569.27, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Doherty. Commissioner Prendergast?
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. The following report highlights the main activity of the Public Works Department, Highway, which consists of Director of Public Works, Russ Palmore, and Highway Department. All metal was picked up throughout the township. All township vehicles and Aston PD vehicles were maintained and serviced. All street light issues were reported to Lenni Electric for replacement or repair. All township parks and properties have branches and trash picked up by the Highway Department. All small engine repairs are completed in-house. All 811 call sheets were reviewed and marked where necessary. The Public Works Department filled 147 pottles using six tons of cold patch asphalt. The infield at Bridgewater Park was refurbished with new dymitec. Cleaned up trash at Dutton Mill, Red Hill, and Legion Roads. The third round of our Hometown Hero banners were installed mainly on Concord Road and Weir Road. Starting mulching playgrounds in our parks, Weir Park, Woodward Park, and Fisher Park completed. Removed a large dead oak tree at the community center near playground area. Moved all holiday decorations from our storage unit to our sheds located behind the community center. Moved all cement blocks from our old building installed at our new building. Thank you to Nick from Olten Supply who allowed us to use his backhoe, driver, and truck to assist in our move. Our sanitation department picked up 84.95 tons of recycling and 479.48 tons of residential waste in the month of January. Please remember that the first full week is metal and appliance week. Ball trash week does not exist anymore. Anything that can be, anything could be burned can be put on your curb for trash at any time. Please have your trash at the curb by 6:00 a.m. on your designated trash day. Any questions or complaints, please contact Russ Palmore, Director of Public Works, at That concludes my committee report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Berry?
Thank you, President Higgins. Police report for April 2022. Incidents handled 518, accident investigations 27, criminal investigations 30, criminal cases cleared nine. Clearance rate part one, 27%. Clearance rate part two, crimes, 33%. And that concludes my report for this month.
Thank you. Commissioner Bowden?
I have a couple of reports. The first report I have is from the Aston Senior Citizens. Their next meeting is going to be held on Thursday, April the 28th, at 10:45 at the Aston Community Center. There will be entertainment beginning at 11 o'clock by the smooth sounds of Steve Silicato. Lunch is going to be roast beef, mashed potatoes, green beans, and a dessert. Try to come out. The second report I have is from the Aston Park and Recreation. We had a wonderful Easter Bunny brunch, which was held on April the 9th at the Aston Community Center. Hundreds of families attended. There were 10,000 Easter eggs found by the little ones, and our grilling masters were Chief Ruggieri and Len Balastiri, who cooked over 400 hot dogs, which were served with water, cakes, snacks, et cetera. A big thank you to all that helped out in our community, and especially to Chief Ruggieri, Len Balastiri, Aston Fire Department, and the Easter Bunny and his helper, who showed up. The next report I have is on our Hometown Heroes. We've had a successful run with our Hometown Heroes, but things have gotten a little crazy. Winds, storms, et cetera, have harmed a lot of our banners, and our Public Works Department has done everything in their power to make it right. It's been really trying for some of our workers. So with that said, we are going to stop at this point of time accepting any applications as of April 29th of this year for the very remainder of the year. Next year, we'll look at it again, see if we can put some more banners up, but at this time, if you're interested in getting a Hometown Hero banner, please have your application in to our Township Building by April the 29th, 2020. And the last report I have is from our library. Cherry Yoga will be returning. You can email Debbie@AstonLibrary.org to get on the list for all the details as new programs are scheduled. Outdoor Storytime is continuing. Wednesdays at 10:30 a.m. is the time for infants and toddlers. Thursday at 10:30 a.m. is the time for preschoolers. Register your child through the calendar at www.AstonLibrary.org. The library is now open until 8:00 p.m. on Thursday evenings. You can now get your free library app on your phone. Search your App Store for Delco Libraries to get it. Thank you.
Very good, Commissioner. And Commissioner McGinn?
Yes, thank you. I have the report for the Aston Township Fire Department. The fire and EMS report this month, there were 44 total fire calls, 166 EMS calls, for a total of 210 calls and two drills. The average dispatch time for an EMS call is 7 minutes 41 seconds, and the fire dispatch on scene is 6 minutes and 59 seconds. I wanted to take a few moments, as we do the fire department report, to talk a little bit about something some folks may have read about in the Daily Times with Crozier and their, the current ownership of Crozier, Prospect, deciding they wanted to get out of the, part of the advanced life support system. You'll hear folks use the term ALS. And so, I'll back up. For some folks, they probably know all the details, but to be honest, I didn't fully appreciate, it's kind of like turning a light switch on, I didn't fully appreciate all of the background and detail that went into the services that happen when somebody needs to dial 911. And so, as you can see by the report times, we've got a really strong volunteer fire department in Aston. We provide ambulance service, and they have EMTs. So if you call 911, you know, they go out. But this advanced life support is, has a paramedic, and there's something called a chase car. So we were mentioned in Aston, and there's another one that's mentioned, essentially that's based out in Norwood. So the reason you have a separate vehicle where you'd say, well, why do you need another vehicle for, why don't they just go in an ambulance, is a paramedic, you want flexibility. So if there's another call and it's more significant and they go out, you want them to be able to respond quickly. And think about it, if you or a loved one were to have a heart attack, or something, a stroke, or something that requires immediate care, right, not just to save your life, but the quality of your life after, you really want that additional service and a paramedic. And so, for decades, essentially, we've had that service. And from talking to a number of people, you know, from Aston and others, including a former boss of mine, former Congressman Kurt Weldon, who was a resident of the town and involved as a congressman and county councilman, Crozier actually reached out years ago, decades ago, to towns like Aston and said, "We want to provide this service," as opposed to you. And there were business reasons at the time, my understanding is, including they wanted to attract people to their hospital. So if there was an emergency, you know, if somebody had an emergency, they'd rather than go to Crozier Hospital in Upland versus, say, Riddle Hospital. And so, over the years, that system's worked. It's worked well. But in recently, Crozier was sold, and Crozier was a nonprofit hospital system, The Prospect, which is a for-profit hospital system. And Prospects looked at this, some may have seen that they announced that they want to be sold to Christiana Healthcare, and there's a letter of intent to do that. And so, you know, Prospects looked at this, they sent us a letter on April 12th, I think we got it sometime in the evening, and essentially said, "This, this cost us, this ALS service costs us $338,000 annually." And they sent the letter to us in Brookhaven, because the unit technically supports both. And they said, "Aston, Brookhaven, you've got 10 days to figure out the financials on this. Otherwise, we're going to give a 90-day notice." And the 90-day notice isn't, it's not as some, you know, number that they just came up with. That's a requirement by the state and others before they can discontinue that service. So that's the minimum time they can give. And so they gave us the minimum time of 90 days and said, "You have to figure this out." So, you know, obviously, that happened last week. You know, I give a lot of credit to our township staff and other members of the fire committee and commissioners and our solicitor for responding and quickly figuring out, okay, what does this mean? You know, what can be done, and what are the options? So, you know, as part of that, we've had a number of meetings, and we actually met this morning with Crozier. So they had some of their staff there that are on the emergency service side, you know, really good people that understand it, and they're, they do their job well, and they just want to provide that service. And their CEO, he called into the meeting, Kevin Spiegel's his name, I think he's been there for a couple of months. And so we went through it, and, you know, one of the things that I think it's important for residents in Aston to know is, we wanted to see what could be done, and also explain the timeline is critical. And, you know, we had asked, basically, hey, we asked for a meeting immediately, this was the quickest you could get together. You know, what exactly is the intent? What do you want to do? And this is going to take some time. And so, as of at least this meeting, we, the Crozier committed to getting, to sending us basically what the financials would look like and what an offer would be to continue this service. We have yet to receive that. They said we would get it at some point today. I know there's still time. So we don't even have that to evaluate with this Friday deadline, unfortunately. And ultimately, at the end, you know, when we talked with the CEO, Mr. Spiegel, you know, we had asked for more time. He informed us that that was just not something that they were in a position to give. So that 90-day deadline from Crozier is what it is. We're going to continue to work and find whatever options are possible. With the staff and others, we have meetings set up with other providers to figure out what opportunities are there. We're actively talking and engaging with other municipalities that are impacted as well. The letter for Norwood and others, I think, asked for a similar amount of money to Norwood and the other communities around there, like Tinencum, Glen Olden, Ridley Park, et cetera. So it's a real challenge, and Mr. Spiegel, at the end of the meeting, in terms of, didn't leave us with a whole lot of hope for optimism. When asked about timing and what we can do, he completed the meeting by saying, "My recommendation to you is to get your residents prepared and, and figure out, you know, what you're going to do 90 days from now." And so, we're going to continue to work with them and anybody else in terms of figuring this out, but for tonight, there's a lot less answers than questions that we have. But I think it was just important for, for everybody here in the room and residents listening at home to understand what this is, what the issue is, why it's impactful, and the work that we're all trying to do to, to figure out a good resolution. So much longer than normal fire department report, but this is a big issue. So that's my report for today, Mike, and we'll continue to update the group on that and, and answer questions as people have them when we get to that point in the agenda. Thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Your, your, your report was very informative, and I think the residents will appreciate it, those here and those at home. So, thank you. I have two announcements I want to make as part of the committee reports. The first one is an update on the Donnelly Concord Roundabout. I know Kathy, Kathy Pap is sitting out there at the back of the meeting, and she's laughing now. So I didn't do this because I knew you would be coming, I just, I wanted to do it. Okay, so as most of you already know, the township has received a grant from PennDOT to install a roundabout at Donnelly Avenue and Concord Road intersection by the community center. A public meeting was held on October 12th, 2021 to present the conceptual plan. Following that meeting, the Board directed township, the township engineers to prepare an alternatives analysis study because of traffic and safety concerns from the public. The intersection alternative, this is hard, the intersection alternative analysis study presented to the commissioners included several options, including movement restrictions. This option addressed the issue of limited gaps in traffic for vehicles turning onto Concord Road. Under this scenario, however, all vehicular movements at Donnelly Avenue and Concord Road intersection will be limited to right turns only, right turns only. Straight-through traffic from the community center to Donnelly Avenue and vice versa would also be eliminated. The ability to make left turns and straight through will be eliminated and enforced by the installation of what's called pork chop islands. Unfortunately, the restrictions would push traffic into neighboring residential streets in the 5th and 7th wards for drivers to reach their original destination. This could result in new capacity issues and could require further movement restrictions and revised traffic calming and traffic restrictions on adjoining streets. However, the option is still under review by the commissioners, as are all of them that were presented. As a follow-up to the alternative study, the Board met with PennDOT last week and has decided to investigate a further traffic calming measure to reduce speeds through the intersection and the school zone. The township engineer is currently preparing a draft of this plan, which the commissioners will review in an upcoming work session before seeking approval to PennDOT. The Board will keep residents informed as to the progress of this plan and other considerations for the intersection at future meetings. So I hope everybody understands that. The next, the next report, I'm going to ask for some help also from Commissioner Prendergast, so I'm going to lead him into this. This has to do with a company called Thayer Distribution. Come September 2022, Aston Township will welcome a new member to the Aston Business Community, Thayer Distribution. Thayer is a minority-owned and family-operated logistics company based in the greater Philadelphia area. They specialize in the redistribution of over 10,000 brand-name candy, snacks, and convenience foods and products to over 900 wholesale distributors on the East Coast. You will see many of the named products, they redistribute whenever you do your food shopping. Example would be, you know, Hershey bars and Reese cups and other things. From their strategic Aston location, they will be able to reach over 70 million consumers within a three-hour drive. Thayer Distribution has 100 total employees across its locations and generates approximately $212.75 million in sales. With their move from Gibbs Town, New Jersey, right over the Commodore Bay Bridge, Aston will be their new headquarters, utilizing the entire 273,600-square-foot building, that's Building B, in the new Springbrook Trade Center for their office and distribution space. While some of Thayer's current employees are expected to relocate to Aston, we also expect there will be employment opportunities for Aston residents. Their presence will also generate revenue for the township, as well as township businesses. So we hope you will join the Board of Commissioners in welcoming Thayer Distribution to our town. So now I would like Commissioner Prendergast to read their press release.
Okay, thank you. Thayer Distribution announces move to new facility in Aston, PA. Gibbs Town, New Jersey, 412, 2022. The Thayer team is excited to announce that it will be moving to a larger facility located in Aston, Pennsylvania, September 2022. The new location will allow Thayer to more than double its current storage space. Guido Galucchio, president of Thayer, states that the move was necessary to keep up with the company's strong growth over the past two years. Growth for 2020 and 2021 saw growth of 45% each year. He further stated that the breakdown of traditional supply chain highlighted the advantages of the Thayer redistribution model. Family-owned and operated, this has been a disruptor of the supply chain since the community inception in 1978. As a redistributor of candy and snack foods, Thayer is in the industry leader in the convenience channel, offering big-name manufacturers logistical efficiency and wholesale distributors best-in-class service. Thayer unrivaled high-tech approach allows more product to flow freely in distribution. And I'd just like to say one more thing, that they told us they want to be friendly to the township and work along with us, not against us. And the meeting we had was very influential and very good. So, thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Okay, number eight on the bucket tonight is, "Open to the public, agenda items only for a half an hour, agenda items only." Does anyone have anything they want to discuss? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. Okay, old business.
I did. Oh, I'm sorry. Review, that's right. Review, and I circled it. Review and approve the Treasurers Report. We have, any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Anybody not in favor? Okay, the ayes have it. Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. Now we move on to old business. Number seven. I thought we just did that. Okay. Review and approval of the bills and the payroll report. All right, do we have any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? Any nays? The ayes have it. Now can I move on to item nine? Okay. It's right in front of me, too. All right, item A, 9A, consider an ordinance to amend chapters 1860.08-F and 1860.99 to revise fines for failure to maintain grass, weeds, or vegetation. Commissioner Berry?
Thank you, President Higgins. An ordinance of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, to repeal chapter 1860.8-F and G and amend chapter 1860.99-B of Aston Township Zoning Code to revise fines associated with failure to maintain grass, weeds, or vegetation on private property. Whereas, the Aston Township Board of Commissioners has previously set forth regulations governing the maintenance of grass, weeds, or vegetation on private property and property adjoining public ways as set forth in chapters 1860.08 and 1860.09, and whereas Aston Township Board of Commissioners desire to amend the penalty provisions for these sections to provide for a more efficient, uniform, and less expensive method of pursuing enforcement of the regulations. Now therefore be resolved this 20th day of April, 2022, that the following sections of the Aston Township Zoning Code are hereby amended. 1860.08-F and G repealed, 1860.99 penalties. Under penalties, section B, the Aston Township Building Code, VOC, or employee of the township designated thereby for the purpose, hereby authorized to issue a violation notice with, with a seven-day deadline and a ticket warning to the owner or occupant, as the case may be, of any premises which fails to comply with the provisions of 1860.08 or 1860.09, directing and requiring such owner or occupant to remove, trim, or cut such weeds, grass, or overgrowth so as to conform to the requirements of the section. If the owner or occupant fails to comply with a warning within this time period, a ticket will be issued on the property's door or by United States mail, setting a fine of $50 per offense for residential and $100 for commercial properties. This, this fee may be amended from time to time by resolution of the Board of Commissioners. Failure to pay this fine within 14 days of issuance of the ticket will result in issuance of a citation as set forth in section 202.99. of a citation as set forth in section 202.99. If the weeds or grass continue to grow through this process, the township authorities may remove, trim, or cut such weeds, grass, or overgrowth, and the cost thereof, together with any additional penalty authorized by the law, shall be collected by the township from such person in a manner provided by law or under the Municipal Claims and Leans Act, being 53 PS 7101, whatever. Effective date this ordinance shall be effective immediately. Repeal or any prior ordinance or parts thereof inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Severability, the provisions of this ordinance and code sections adopted hereby are severable, and if any clause, sentence, or section thereof shall be adjudged or invalid or unconstitutional, such decision shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions. Attested due by Kellye Pippin, James Mstigall, President, and that's in a form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions from the board? All right, seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion carries. And number nine, B, consider an ordinance to amend chapter 660.02 to set fines for failure to remove snow and ice from sidewalks. Again, Commissioner Burry.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. An ordinance of the Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania to amend chapter 660.02 of the Aston Township Zoning Code to set a fine for failure to remove snow or ice from sidewalks. Whereas, the Aston Township Board of Commissioners has previously set forth regulations governing the removal of snow and ice from sidewalks and private streets as set forth in chapter 660.02, and whereas this section of the township's code does not provide for a specific penalty associated with failure to remove snow and ice from sidewalks within the time limit set forth in the ordinance, and where the Aston Township Board of Commissioners believe that it is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of township residents to set a specific fine for failure to remove snow and ice from the sidewalk in order to expeditiously address dangerous conditions in a township. Now, therefore, it be resolved this 20th day of April 2022 that the following sections of the Aston Township Zoning Code are hereby amended. 660.02A1, in any case where the owner, tenant, or occupant of such property fails, neglects, or refuses to comply with the subsection A above within the time prescribed therein, the Aston Township Board Building Code official or employee of the township designated thereby for the purpose may proceed immediately to issue a ticket in the amount of $50 for residential properties and $100 for commercial properties. This fee may be amended from time to time by resolution of the Board of Commissioners. Failure to pay this fine within 14 days of issuance of the ticket will result in the issuance of a citation as set forth in section 202.99. The effective date this ordinance shall be effective immediately. Repeal or any prior ordinance or parts thereof inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Severability, the provisions of this ordinance and code sections adopted hereby are severable, and if any clause, sentence, or section thereof shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such decision or judgment shall not affect the validity of the remaining provisions. Attested to by Kellye Pippin Township Secretary, James Mstigall, President, and that's in a form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Did a good job at reading those long ones. We're going to have you do all of them in the future. Okay, now, we're done with the old business. We'll go to new business, item 10, 10A. Announce 2022 Camp Rainbow information, Commissioner Bowden.
I'd like to announce 2022 Camp Rainbow information. Camp Rainbow is scheduled to begin its six-week work session on Monday, June 20, and run through and until Friday, July 29. Camp will begin at 9:00 AM until 12:00 PM, Monday through Friday. The cost for camp is $40 for one child. For each additional child after that, $5 will be discounted. If you have one child, it would be 40. Two child, it would be 40 plus, for the first 35 for each additional. Registration forms will be available at the Township Administration Office, 2 New Road, during normal business hours, or can be printed off the Aston Township website at www.AstonTownship.net. Registration will be open on Monday, May 2, 2022, which is much earlier than previous years, to give residents the opportunity to register their children. There will be no camp on Monday, July 4, to observe the Fourth of July holiday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Item B, consider a resolution to approve the grant submission to the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, the DCNR, for the Red Hill Road property acquisition. Commissioner Doherty.
Okay. Township of Aston, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, Resolution Number 2022-49. So, I have a resolution page for a DCR, DCNR C2P2 grant. So, whereas Aston Township desires to undertake the project Red Hill Road acquisition, and whereas the applicant desires to receive from the Department of Conservation and Natural Resources a grant for the purpose of carrying out this project, and whereas the application package includes a document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant, and whereas the applicant understands that the contents of the document entitled Terms and Conditions of Grant, including appendices referred to herein, will become the terms and conditions of a grant agreement between the applicant and the department if the applicant is awarded a grant. And now, therefore, it is resolved that the grant application may be electronically signed on behalf of the applicant by William J. DeFeo III, who at the time of signing has the title of Township Manager and the email address of WDeFeo@AstonTownship.net. It is, if this official signed the grant application electronic authorization prior to the passage of this resolution, this grant of authority applies retroactively to the date of signing. If the applicant is awarded a grant, the grant application electronic authorization signed by the above official will become the applicant grantee's executed signature page for the grant agreement, and the applicant grantee will be bound by the grant agreement. Any amendment to the grant agreement may be signed on behalf of the grantee by the official who, at the time of signing of the amendment, has the title specified in paragraph one, and the grantee will be bound by the amendment. I hereby certify that this resolution was adopted by the Aston Township Board of Commissioners this 20th day of April 2022, signed by James Mstigall, President, Board of Commissioners, in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any comments by the board? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? The motion carries. Okay, now, item C, consider a motion to approve Aston Township to issue a request for proposals, an RFP, to provide administration and police department offices space. Commissioner McGinn.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve the issuing of an RFP to provide the Township Administration and Police Department with office space. All proposals must be submitted to Aston Township Manager, William DeFeo, no later than 12:00 PM on May 9, 2022. Any late submissions will be returned unopened.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. I would like to, before we vote, ask our solicitor to just give us a brief explanation of what this is all about, considering we just took our current space within the last year.
Sure. So, the current lease that we're operating under was executed as part of an emergency declaration by the Board of Commissioners. That enabled us to enter into a one-year lease, but really no more. So, this RFP, let me back up, because of bidding process, any lease, which is a dollar figure in excess of $18,000, requires that we put something out to bid. So, the, the next two years without option of the third year is being advertised in Daily Times. It'll be on the township website, and we're following all of the regulations that are required by the First Class Township Code in order to properly put this out for bid. And then, once those results come in, then an informed decision will be made with respect to the best place and the most economical place for the township administrative offices and the police department.
Thank you very much. So, we've heard some comments, and we, we have a motion and a second. So, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item 10D, consider a motion to approve the bid proposal from Global Security for camera installation. Commissioner Doherty.
I make a motion to approve the bid proposal from Global Security to install cameras at the Aston Township Community Center, New Public Works Building, and Vin Smith Park. This is not to exceed $13,000 in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. 10E, consider a motion to approve the bid from AF Damon, Inc. for the 2022 road program. And that is for Commissioner Prendergast.
Consider a motion to approve the bid from AF Damon, Inc. for the 2022 road program. I make a motion to approve the bid from AF Damon, Inc. of Upland, PA, in the amount of $486.00 plus 10 cents to complete the 2022 Aston Township road program in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries. Item 10, item 10F, consider a motion to appoint Nick Samby to the Aston Township Board of Health Committee, and that's for Nancy Bowden. Commissioner Bowden.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Nick Samby as the fifth ward of Aston Township to the Board of Health Committee. This appointment is to fulfill the five-year unexpired term of Philouaca, ending on January 19, 2027, in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Item 10G, consider a motion to approve a tax refund of $429.96 to Paul Doherty for an overpayment due to their assessed property value decreasing, and that's for Commercial Doherty.
I make a motion to approve the tax refund of $429.96 to Paul Doherty for overpayment due to the assessed property value decreasing, in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We also have another tax refund, and that's number, that's item eight. Consider a motion to approve a tax refund of $412.74 to Resurrection Episcopal Church due to their assessed value decreasing. Commissioner Doherty.
I make a motion to approve the tax refund of $412.74 to Resurrection Episcopal Church for overpayment due to the assessed property value decreasing, in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item I, consider a motion to approve a refund to PJ S Electric LLC in the amount of $226.50, again, to Commissioner Doherty.
I make a motion to approve the refund to PJ S Electric LLC in the amount of $226.50 for an electrical permit. The company is no longer completing the work, in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. 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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Number, item J, consider a motion to approve a refund to Power Home Solar LLC in the amount of $2,548.71, and that's Commissioner Doherty again.
I make a motion to approve the refund to Power Home Solar LLC in the amount of $2,548.71 for an electrical permit. The homeowner has canceled the project, in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Item K, consider a motion to approve a refund to Power Home Solar LLC in the amount of $160, and that's Commissioner Doherty again.
I make a motion to approve the refund to Power Home Solar LLC in the amount of $160 for a building permit. The homeowner has canceled the project, in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Item 10L, announce the, announce notice of equipment sold from the Aston Township Public Works Department, and that's Commissioner Prendergast.
I would like to announce that the following pieces of equipment have been sold from the Aston Township Public Works Department via municipal bid. A homemade hot tar pool behind cracks sealing machine for $2,622. A John Deere zero-turn motor for $1,300, and a 2012 Patriot trailer for $1,750.
And we move to escrow releases, and tonight Commissioner McGinn's going to do the duties.
Thank you. We have a few of these tonight. I'll read the first one. Whereas, ordinance number 240 and ordinance number 360 provide for escrow funds for completion of improvements, and whereas, the Township Engineer and the New Construction Committee has approved the request for escrow funds released to John Stone, 2726 Lenai Road, Folio Number 1374-03, Subaccount Number 7765359706. Now, therefore, it be resolved that Aston Township executes such action as required by the Township Secretary and the President of the Board of Commissioners to release the sum of $500 payable to John Stone, 2726 Lenai Road. I make this in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second, or any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any, any opposed? Okay, motion carries.
All right, here's the second one. This is a request for escrow funds released to Open Sky Energy, Inc., five Nathaniel Circle, roof-mounted solar array, Folio Number 1622-52, Subaccount Number 7765886808, to release the sum of $367.50 payable to Open Sky Energy, Inc., five Nathaniel Circle, and make this in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? So, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you. I also request for escrow funds to be released to Isaac and Asia Cannon, 24 Vinuti Drive, in-ground pool, Folio Number 2617-74, Subaccount Number 7765359772, to release the sum of $148.75 payable to Isaac and Asia Cannon, 24 Vinuti Drive, and make this in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Nays? The ayes have it.
Thanks. And lastly, the following amount is for engineering service fees to be paid to Pinoni Associates for the month of April, $4,017, and an additional engineering fees to be paid to Cerilli Associates, Inc. for the month of April totaling $5,717.25. I make this in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. One more, Danny. One more summary.
This one, too?
Yeah.
It was a summary one, Joe. I just did the summary.
Prior page, yeah. Was there two of them there? Did you read two?
Yeah, we did them both.
You did them, okay. Okay, sorry about that. I'm so happy that I didn't have to read them tonight. Yeah. Okay, next is item 12, open to the public for a half an hour. Do we have anybody that would like to come up and speak? Ms. Pap? So, you didn't believe what I had to say?
No. I appreciate that, Al. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate you coming.
So, I just really, Kathy Pap, 2931. So I just really, Kathy Pap, twenty-nine thirty-one Concord, Great Aston, just really had like two or three little quick clarifications. Last month's meeting, you talked about a newsletter, very happy. Is that out yet, or is it quarterly? So is it on the website, though, or just Facebook? Okay. Okay, because I was looking, and I did not scan it enough, so. Okay, yeah, I kinda, I looked under there, too, but, okay. Obviously, you know now why I'm retired, because I can't be trusted. But along that lines of from my previous job, too, one of the suggestions on the website, you have things posted, announcements, et cetera, but there's no date or version control, because when I was looking about if there was an update about the roundabout, there was a mention on there about the grant and the three grants for the different items. However, it didn't have a date on that, so I didn't know if there was an update to the roundabout or not, so just a suggestion that maybe if you're posting stuff electronically on the website, that you might put like posted date, edited date, version date, so people know it's something that happened a month ago, two months ago, et cetera. So, and then.
That's a good suggestion.
And then that's it. So thank you very, oh, no, the other one, the cameras that were being, that are approved, who's gonna be monitoring them? Is that gonna be the police or the the township? Who? Just curious. Okay, great, thank you very much, appreciate it.
The one that, the one for the park, there's been a lot of vandalism in Vin Smith Park. It's the park that, with the exception of the Smiles on Playground, it's the one that has the newest equipment, and we just have a problem with vandalism from the middle school age kids, you know, and we're, so this is the best way right now to try to curb that and know who's doing it so we can take them to their parents and and get it taken care of, you know, so. Okay, anybody else would like to come up? Okay, we'll see none. I would like to go across the table here and for closing comments, Commissioner Dougherty.
I just want to thank Sergeant Osborne for his twenty-five years of service.
Commissioner Prendergast.
Same here, I just congratulate Sergeant Osborne, thank you.
Commissioner Berry?
The same, congratulations, Chad, on twenty-five years of service.
Commissioner Bowden.
I'm gonna tell a story about Sergeant Osborne. Many, many years ago, twenty-five years ago, Sergeant Osborne wasn't Sergeant Osborne, he lived in Linwood at that time, and his mother, who was sitting here in the audience tonight, Carolyn, called me on the phone, and I knew her because she was a teacher in the Upper Trichester School District, and at that time I happened to be on the school board, so I knew some of the teachers. And Carolyn called me and she said, Nancy, I have this wonderful son who would like to be a police officer in Aston, and of course, we all have wonderful sons who would like to do whatever, so we took it upon a grain of salt. And back at that time, the commissioner that was in charge of the police was Sergeant, was Commissioner Lou Fisher, and he was like, oh, that sounds like a good idea, she lives, Mrs. Mrs. Osborne was a part of the Curry family that owned the Curry Farm up on Bernie Highway at that time, and that's what her maiden name was. So I went to Commissioner McGinn, your uncle, and I said, we, blah, 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 and he said, nah, we don't want this young man, nah, we don't want this young man. So twenty-five years later, Sergeant Osborne, upon Mr. Fisher at that time, and not with your uncle's blessing, but with me fighting with your uncle, which was normal, we have Sergeant Osborne. So congratulations, Chad, who's been my neighbor for twenty-five years.
Commissioner McGinn.
Thank you. Well, it's good to hear, I'm not the only one that knows he could be wrong every once in a while. He got most of them right, but he could be wrong every once in a while. Well, no, congratulations to Sergeant Osborne, and, you know, obviously, like I mentioned earlier in the fire department report, you know, we're gonna continue to work on this issue with Crozier Hospital, it's a serious one for all of us on the board and the staff, and if folks have questions, you know, don't hesitate to reach out to the staff here, and, you know, we'll keep you updated, you know, in between, but certainly have another update next month and and hopefully some some progress or some ideas on options of how we can move forward, whether it's with Crozier or in a in a different direction. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Ms. Norton Beck, anything? Mr. Viscuzzo? Okay. Ms. Pippen?
Just congratulations to Sergeant Osborne.
Okay, and Commissioner.
Just a couple things tonight, I just want to thank the Commissioners for their support of Aston Valley Baseball League and the Aston Middletown Little League. The last two Saturdays, we've been out there for opening day ceremonies, and I want to thank the Commissioners for supporting the youth in Aston Township, of which all of our families here have benefited from having them support that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The only thing I really have to say is I also congratulate Sergeant Osborne for his service and and so forth, and we hope he'll be here for a while, and that's all I have. So I'm gonna need to have a motion for adjournment? Okay, we, so moved, okay, thank you.